Good morning, thanks for asking.
Okay, Stephanie.
We're here with my brother-in-law.
Is this my house?
Yeah.
Yeah. It's Kevin, you can see your name.
I know, but Brian's not in the house.
Oh, I thought you did, and I called me up to Kevin. That was your client. Yeah. So, yeah, so what made that house tell when the other one in the month?
I don't have the key to the door.
Oh, perfect. Yeah, I can see there's a number on this house. Oh, it's a 1000. It's nice. Yeah, they were four girls, and they were listed as four. They're lying. This one today went like a Brazila.
Wow, is it a cousin?
Yes. But that's how you make it. It's hard, or it's not, it's dirty. Like, that's how we do this. It's actually important to be like the shows that... Yeah. They're about. Right now? Yeah. Right behind you. Oh, okay. Jessica, are you home?
What?
Oh, thank you.
You're good.
Very fine.
Oh, did you?
Not a person's horse, but...
How did he get her?
It was, there's so many roads, there's so many cars.
Yeah.
I'm like, what? Like, about seeing anybody? No.
It looks like what I called. That's so fun. But this is like, it's right, but they got it for us.
What's the wall phone on those guys? You use their phones?
Yeah, like, they're like...
I would, I played, I don't know, there's so many rules. And so I believe that they have a way to like shut them down. Um, and they have some shameful... Like, not even much.
It does, it does seem to be an equalizer that all actors can play. Whether, whether it's playing a bad...
They have no rules. And that gets to, um...
Jessica, our, it's a lot harder to play.
I know. I think if you're like, you know, like, you're on the score, you're like, oh, the score is your survey. Then you have to like let it bounce.
All these rules.
And this is by God. God, it's all you bring, all your parents want to be paid all the time.
Oh, yeah. Likes looks like bad men, like, you know.
Oh, you did?
In a backyard of boys, we had rackets, uh, I bought one too last time. Right, I got it. We were telling those, for forty years, they were like twenty dollars, and they started up.
Yeah.
A little bit of, actually, we got a body official birdie, so I had a lot of sex.
That's fine, it was, it was still fine, it was like, watch. Pick it back, that's it.
Are you ready?
I'm ready.
I'd call the board, our council meeting for Monday, June twenty-fourth, seven P.M. Uh, with that, we'll start with the opening prayer from Marcus Rapp.
Laura, thank you for bringing us here this evening. Thank you for this wonderful city you bestowed upon us. Help us to guide the city in the right direction, given us this great responsibility. Help us take it very serious and listen to people, listen to great new ideas. And have always said, you know, give us the courage to stand up for what is right. And give us the determination to continue on with this little process of government. And to move forward as the way that we need. Also have the compassion, give us the compassion to, to listen to everybody and understand what they're saying. So, thanks again, help us this evening to do the right thing as we move forward. And guys, let me pray, amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the fight of the United States of America. And to the Republic for which it stands. One nation, unarowed, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Let's hear Finance Director Nicole Roman.
Holtz.
Here.
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 Keisling, here.
Wyron, here.
Paulson, here.
Six President.
Do I have a motion to excuse, uh, President Peters?
Second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, motion carries. I'd like to have a motion to consider the following. Committee of the whole meeting, amended meetings of June third, two thousand nineteen. Council meeting amended June tenth, two thousand nineteen. Financial report, May two thousand nineteen. And liquor license, North Canton Golf, fifteen hundred road with circle southwest. Motion to consider?
Submove.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Care, motion carries. With that, we'll welcome recognition of visitors. I ask that there's a five-minute time limit that you uphold that. I would say should be professional with your remarks. And knowing that, uh, we have a great job done by people here with transcripts, that we don't talk over each other, and that we comment your comments after the meeting. With that, I'll open the floor, Laura wants to address council administration. Mr. Tripp.
Uh, Laura Tripp, one-one-two-seventy East Maple, uh, North Canton. I really didn't have any intentions of speaking tonight, but, uh, one thing kind of had been plugging me the past few months. As you will recall, maybe nine, ten months ago, uh, Mrs. Roll and I, we kind of, uh, hit on the same night about the piggybacking meetings. Uh, you know, console meeting and then a meeting of the whole. And in essence, uh, console was meeting twice a month for, for a long period of time. Now, since the first of the year, that's changed, obviously. And I, you know, I've got, uh, thank, I thank Mr. Revolt for that to some degree. The administration for coming up with a lot of projects for console. So, now we're back to kind of, uh, a regular basis, meetings four times a month. Which, what the charter calls for and our ordinance calls for. Uh, but since then, I think one of the aftermaths of, uh, the, uh, piggyback meetings was, and no disrespect to you, Mr. Soreta, but we no longer have a minister coming to have an opening prayer. Mark, uh, Mark Consol, Mr. Soreta, he do a commendable job. But, again, it's a tradition, and I'm kind of a traditionalist. And, you know, I, I asked for four meetings a month, charter. We always used to have the minister. Now, Laura Brown, have you fell down in the job as your assistant? Mr. Fox fell down in the job getting a minister? Has our council president fell down in the job? He's the one that should be responsible for the meetings. So, again, it, it's not a major thing, but again, it's just an aftermath of what's happened, you know, in the past five and a half years. So, that's one of the things I wanted to talk about. And again, Mr. Mark, with Mr. Soreta, you do a real fine job, but... Now, the other thing, back in twenty sixteen, I brought up at a council meeting, it was in June of twenty sixteen, I picked up, passed that on to you, Mr. Revetta, and to you, of Mr. Diorio. A lot of tax rebate for individuals who would paint their houses, uh, put a new roof on, new siding, something of that nature. Oh, that was in twenty sixteen. Since that period of time, nothing. I gave it to Mr. Diorio probably in February, and I think I taught you in February. Since then, nothing for the average man, but we've passed ordinance, out there ordinance, on emergency cases. But what for the common man? Not much. We spent a hundred and fifty thousand dollars to move console chambers to, uh, the civic center. Again, for what, I don't know. That money could have been used for tax rebates, very easy. So, you know, again, not major things, but the one thing I'm, I'm kind of, uh, that really caught my attention was the lack of a minister coming to, uh, council meetings. So, uh, with that in mind, uh, I think it's something you should take a look at and, uh, go from there.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Tripp.
Thank you.
Anyone else like to address councils evening?
So, I was more three oh seven, Third Street, Southeast, North Canton, Ohio. Uh, several subjects here. First of all, council's schedule, uh, economizes two vacation periods a year, and yet, I guess that doesn't work for some people. I don't know why Mr. Peters is not here. Uh, Mr. Tripp, in response to your, uh, recognition that they're now back to four meetings nights a month, you do realize this is election year.
I didn't say that.
And I might account for it. I really wonder if everybody in this room really understands why we have public meetings. Why we have public speaks. Because it doesn't appear that anybody in City Hall really wants to hear from its citizenry. Here's what they have to say. Last week, uh, it was announced there was going to be a grant to Debold. It was also announced that we're going to put it on tonight for an emergency. He had, we weren't allowed to speak on it last night. If any citizens want to speak on it, we know. We're talking five minutes before you pass in on emergency tonight. Let me give you the definition of extortion. Obtain something by force, threats, or other unfair means. Because that's what this grant is all about. We've done this repeatedly, I've watched this go on for, since, since I've been up here for eighteen, nineteen years. Extortion, also called shakedown, outwrestling, or exaction. An offense of obtaining money, property, or services from an individual or institution through coercion. And that's what's going on here with every, uh, grant or tax abatement or whatever. There's always the lingering implied threat that we'll go somewhere else. Extortion is distinguished from robbery. In robbery, whether armed or not, the offender takes property from the victim by the immediate use of force or fear, and force will be immediately used, as in the classic lying your money or your life. Extortion, which is not limited to the taking of property, involves a verbal or written installation of fear that something will happen to the victim if they do not comply with the extortionist's will. Well, everybody has got a big brain in their head here that, oh my God, they may go somewhere else. You're promising to give back income taxes that are paid by their very own lowest-paid employee, making nineteen bucks an hour or so. To me, there's an implied contract. So, when an individual pays taxes to the community in which they live, those taxes are going to go to the benefit, benefit of the community. You're circumnavigating that implied contract in my mind. And you're giving it back to their employees. So they can lower their wage costs. This is wrong. Now, the definition of extortion, to obtain from a person by force, intimidation, or undue or illegal power. This, yeah, this intimidation, we'll go somewhere else. And they do have undue power. They certainly have financial power. So, as you know, I've been speaking against them here for years. You're creating unfair advantages in our tax system for certain select people. There are many people who have come to this community and didn't ask a cent. CBS, uh, was at O'Reilly's up north. Cheryl Williams, there was a proffer to give him an, uh, an abatement, which quickly died.
Mr. Rapp.
I got it, Mr. Holtz.
Appreciate it.
How do we want to hear?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else like to address councils evening? Okay, I think we've seen none, we need to do old business. Do I have a motion second to read by title only the third reading of Resolution Number Four dash two thousand nineteen?
Submove.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you.
A resolution pursuant to North Canton codified ordinance, section eleven eighty-one point zero four, requesting the planning commission review, consider, and recommend, or not recommend, council's proposal to amend section eleven seventy-nine point one zero, variances subsection C, reviewed by the board of the city's codified ordinances to replace public hearing with adjudication hearing.
Thank you, Councilman Keisling.
I would like to make a motion to amend, uh, the third reading of ordinance eleven seventy-nine point one zero, section C, reviewed by the board, which has just been read, to make a technical correction to strike a mid-paragraph conditional use permit and substitute variance.
Okay, so that's a motion on the floor.
I will send that.
Can you second that? Roll call, or do I need to voice that? That's four, it's my second. Okay, what is going to do? Remember, Doc Fontaine?
Yes.
Oh, Paul, I'm sorry. Oh, just, he just knew, okay. All in favor?
Aye.
For the amendment.
For the amendment.
Got it. Now I motion me adopt, add an amendment.
Second.
Second, okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries? So, you have a motion this evening? All right. Motion second to read by title only the third reading of Resolution Number Five dash two thousand nineteen.
Submove. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries? Jim?
A resolution pursuant to North Canton codified ordinance, section eleven eighty-one point zero four, requesting the planning commission review, consider, and recommend, or not recommend, council's proposal to amend section eleven seventy-seven point zero five. Public hearing and notice by planning commission for the city's codified ordinances to replace public hearing with adjudication hearing.
Okay, Councilman Keisling.
Uh, sort of piggybacks on the one before, same thing, I'm sending it over to planning to see if we can get that changed in the ordinance. I motion me adopt.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries? Resolution, uh, do I have a motion second to read by title, third reading of Resolution Number Six dash two thousand nineteen?
Submove.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries?
A resolution pursuant to North Canton codified ordinance, section eleven eighty-one point zero four, requesting the planning commission review, consider, and recommend, or not recommend, council's proposal to amend section eleven seventy-seven point one zero, action by city council, to action by city council for similar use recommendation.
Thank you, Councilman Keisling.
Yes, this is just cleaning up some verbiage, making it clear for everybody. I'm sending over the thing.
Second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries? Okay, motion second to read by title only the second reading of Resolution Number Seven dash two thousand nineteen.
Submove.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries? Jim?
A resolution pursuant to North Canton codified ordinance, section eleven eighty-one point zero four, requesting the planning commission review, consider, and recommend, or not recommend, council's proposal to amend section eleven eighty-one point zero eight, action by city councils regarding amending zoning ordinances.
Okay, Councilman Keisling.
Yes, this is another clarification, I'm sending over the planning to give us the recommendation. I motion me adopt.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries? Okay, motion and second to read by title only the second reading of Resolution Number Ten dash two thousand nineteen.
Submove.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries?
A resolution requesting the planning commission recommend to city council amendments in North Canton's codified ordinance, chapter eleven thirty-three, single-family and two-family residential district regulations, section eleven thirty-three point zero eight, accessory use regulations, subsection E, fences and walls, and to include language for fence heights and flagpole height placement requirements.
Thank you.
This is something we're sending off to planning to give us the recommendations on changing this verbiage a little bit, that you can move on user-friendly in twenty nineteen, and I motion me adopt.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries? Motion and second to read by title only the third reading of ordinance number forty-three dash two thousand nineteen.
Submove. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries?
An ordinance amending ordinance number fifty dash zero three, zoning ordinance of the city of North Canton, to change certain parcels along Orchard Avenue Northeast, Power Street Northeast, and Woodbury Street Northeast, as recommended by the planning commission to a mixed-use overage in residential two-family where necessary to provide relief to the residents and businesses they're in, and bring the zoning districts map and pertinent partials in line with the current uses, together with providing opportunities for future residents and businesses, as illustrated below in the zoning district map attached here to and incorporated here.
Laura Keisling.
Yes, this is over by the Hoover District, um, doing a general change, we've had a couple of hearings. I think everybody's excited and we want to get moving on. I motion me adopt.
There's that, second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, motion carries? If someone else to change now. Motion second to read by title only the second reading of ordinance number forty-five dash two thousand nineteen.
Submove. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries?
An ordinance amending chapter one-one-one, council of codified ordinances of the city of North Canton, specifically, section one-one-one point zero one, meetings, time, place, and recording procedure, by adding subsection J as described below.
Councilman Ball.
Okay. Ordinance forty-five and ordinance forty-six reflect some changes in our minutes, uh, procedure. As we all recall, uh, our rules of council require, uh, minutes from the committees, and a favorable committee report to advance legislation. As part of the original minutes document or form, we checked off which members of the administration were present for the discussion. So what we're going to do is we move in the next ordinance, we move to using a, uh, verbatim transcript as the minutes, we're going to make sure that the, uh, members of the administration who are present are duly recorded as part of the proceeding. And so, four forty-five dash two thousand nineteen just simply says, "All transcribed meetings shall state those city officials in attendance and seat in the papers." So I would move that we adopt a second reading of ordinance forty-five dash nineteen.
Second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries? Thank you. Next, motion second to read by title only the second reading of ordinance number forty-six dash two thousand nineteen.
Submove.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries?
An ordinance amending chapter one-one-one, council of codified ordinances of the city of North Canton, specifically, section one-one-one point zero six, council meeting agenda by amending subsections A and B as described below.
Okay. Laura Ball.
Well, again, this, uh, this particular amendment principally establishes the verbatim transcript as the alternative to committee minutes.
Motion to approve?
Submove.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries? Take care of old business, and I'll do with this. So, a motion and a second to read by title only the first reading of Resolution Number Eleven dash two thousand nineteen.
Submove.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries?
A resolution of submission, question of a renewal of the tax levy for the purpose of providing additional funds for the city's portion of stormwater sewer improvements in the city of North Canton, Stark County, Ohio, declaring the same to be an emergency.
Councilmember Warren.
Um, Laura, I don't know if there's anything else you want to say about this, but it's just a process we go to put a renewal on the ballot. Anything else you want to say about that, and where do we have the street sewer?
That sounds good, thank you.
Okay? And if there is anything else, I would adopt.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries? Do I have a motion second to suspend the rules of council for three readings for Resolution Number Eleven dash two thousand nineteen?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries? And do I have a motion second to adopt under suspension of the rules of Resolution Number Eleven dash two thousand nineteen?
Submove.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries? Next, do I have a motion and second to read by title only the first reading of Resolution Number Twelve dash two thousand nineteen?
Submove.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries? Jim?
A resolution of submission, question of a renewal of the tax levy for the purpose of providing additional funds for the city's portion of street improvements in the city of North Canton, Stark County, Ohio, declaring the same to be an emergency.
Okay, Councilmember Warren.
We could just kind of sum it up, or if there's something else, I would adopt.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries? Do I have a motion second to suspend the rules of council for three readings for Resolution Number Twelve dash two thousand nineteen?
Submove.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries? And do I have a motion and second to adopt or suspension of the rules of Resolution Number Twelve dash two thousand nineteen?
Submove.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries? Thank you. Next, do I have a motion second to read by title only the first reading of ordinance number forty-eight dash two thousand nineteen?
Submove.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries? Jim?
An ordinance amending section twenty-four, authorized manpower, ordinance number ten dash eighty-nine, police personnel ordinance as amended to allow for additional personnel as needed to fill positions receiving funding from outside sources.
Okay, um, just on there, it's his committee, I think we discussed it last week, any questions on it? Administration, do you want to? See none?
My motion weighed out.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries? Thank you. Next, do I have a motion second to read by title only the first reading of ordinance number forty-nine dash two thousand nineteen?
Submove.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries? Jim?
An ordinance authorizing the transfer of funds from the general fund, the fire fund, the EMS fund, and from the street fund to the capital reserve fund in a total amount of three hundred thirty-five thousand nine hundred ninety-seven dollars and fifty cents for the current expenses during the fiscal year ending December thirty-first, two thousand nineteen.
Thank you, Councilmember Warren.
This is just a way that we're moving and transferring funds, that when Laura came, um, came to her position, um, kind of set up this reserve fund, and it's, it's worked really well, we talked about it last week. Any other questions, I would adopt.
Second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries? Okay. Next, do I have a motion and second to read by title only the first reading of ordinance number fifty dash two thousand nineteen?
Submove.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries? Jim?
An ordinance authorizing area of the city of North Canton to enter into an industrial and commercial job creation incentive agreement by between the city and Debold, Exper Incorporated, declaring the same to be an emergency.
Okay, Councilmember Keisling.
Yes, this is our exciting news, last week, um, Debold was moving into the old Sorias portion of the Hoover District, and we are giving them a job creation incentive grant over five years, fifty percent of the income taxes will be given back to Debold. Five percent goes back into our CIC, which we're so excited about, it's essentially the first time we've ever reimbursed our CIC for anything. And forty-five percent will go to the general fund. The agreement contains, within a hundred and eighty days of the facility's completed renovation, they shall create two hundred and fifteen new full-time jobs in the city with an annual compensation of eight million three hundred and ninety-three thousand nine hundred and forty-four dollars, and shall maintain that level during the period of disagreement. So that's pretty exciting news, we're thrilled to be talking this incentive to them, to get them into our community, yes, sometimes unfortunately we do have to offer and... Yes, sometimes unfortunately we do have to offer incentives to, you know, we're bidding against other communities that are moving from North Carolina. I'm sure that's fit or sweet for them as well, but it's bringing them closer to their corporate offices, which I think is pretty important when all is said and done, and it's bringing them closer to us, which is very exciting, so.
Yeah, I think it's important, we're bringing new jobs to region, not just relocating existing jobs in Stark County.
Yes.
So it's a win for the whole county, especially North Canton. Any other comments, Matthew?
It has to be performance-based, so it's not like you're giving them money because they don't hit their markers long away, then we have more control over the excess fifty percent, and Patrick or the mayor for sure probably knows about that if he sees it.
Yeah. So, so this really is exciting because when you look at like all the economic indicators, when you have a manufacturing job, that has the greatest economic return to the community. So they say that for every dollar that's spent by a manufacturing company in, in sales, there's a one point three-three dollar return to the community. Because as they come in, they have a lot more people to do the, the lay manufacturing in this case, and then at the same time, those people have to eat, they do grocery shopping, they go to restaurants, they have other services, you know, doctors and so forth. So it's, it's really going to be a great boost to the area. The other thing is too, is with that facility, you know, really it was serving as a trucking depot, and, and now we're going to have people in there, it's going to really revitalize that, and it'll be a new economic anchor for the north part of the Hoover District. When it comes to the income tax, they're estimating two hundred and fifteen workers, an eight point four million dollar payroll, times the one and a half percent, that's a hundred and twenty-six thousand in income that the city will collect. And then based on the agreement, we will take fifty percent of that, and after we collect it, we will return it back to the company. If it was higher, then we would accept a hundred and thirty thousand, a hundred and forty thousand, but fifty percent would go back. If it was less, we would accept fifty percent of whatever the lesser amount was. And then, as Marshall had mentioned, the good news is that five percent is going to go back to the CIC. So we're looking at a hundred and twenty-six thousand dollars, forty-five percent will come with the city year after year after year after the, that period where that agreement is up, and they stay here and they continue to grow. If you look at those other companies, they're in the Hoover District. Right now, we have over twelve hundred jobs, and we're getting close to, well, between four and five hundred thousand dollars in income, Laura?
Over five hundred.
Over five hundred thousand dollars. That's, that's a lot, that's a lot of, contributes to the base of our city. And the other thing is, we are actually economically much stronger now than we've ever been because our tax base is more diverse. So Darrell, you've been around for a long time, when Hoover was ever standing, it was like upwards of forty percent of our tax base, maybe fifty percent.
It's larger than that.
Yeah. And now, now obviously it's zero, but our, our, you know, top ten, top fifteen employers are, it's much more diverse, so that when we lose a company, you know, we're, we're much more stable.
You have another?
Yeah, I'm just. Two things. Number one is that this is a great step because it moved this two hundred and ten jobs closer to recapture the magic three thousand loss with Hoover fold, and so we would take a, a large leap in that direction. The second is that what we can't predict are what the expansion opportunities may be at this site. I think, I would say that, I want to say that I think we listen to diverse opinions in this forum, I just happen to disagree with Chuck. This is an extraordinarily competitive environment for jobs, particularly in North Canton, Ohio. We were very lucky to win this opportunity through some very quick and very skilled negotiation to get this project to us. It could have gone some other place. There are other communities that would or could have won this. The fact of the matter is, and I like Chuck in his definitions, he used extortion tonight, and he had one last week, and I'll throw one out there because I think this argument is specious, and I will define it because that's wrong, it means wrong. The fact of the matter is, we have used grants as incentives very, very successfully. The state provided a five million job dollar job-worthy site grant that allowed us to grow employment across the street. The city, in effect, when it bought cranes for Myers-controlled product, products, that investment was, was returned within three or four years. Clearly, on the large projects, where the wages are higher and the competition is stiffer, we're going to have to be creative in what we do if we want the opportunity. We're not going to win every one of them, but we have to be open, the answer can't be just no, we don't do that. Because if we do do that, I can assure you that our future will only surround small retail operations. And that will be it. Big stuff, where you have site selectors who are actively canvassing, and I think that's important to understand, and it goes to remind what happens here. We had site selectors looking for this company in a wide, in a large number of locations, and those site selectors eventually winnow it down. We were fortunate to have won. I think it goes to many of the things that we're doing here, but the bottom line is, we're lucky to have this, did well on it, and it makes sense. We're into this project for no more than we were for the cranes across the street, and I think that's something to bear in mind. It's only just the beginning. And particularly, particularly if we can help this company grow, and it sees value in expanding employment, which is always a possibility.
On, on top of that there, I, I agree, we have to be competitive, and I think this is a spark, I mean, we've all know the saying, only takes a spark to get a fire going, correct? And if we, you look at people that want to come here, and you gotta, you gotta be competitive with that, but at the same, why wouldn't they come here? What were we now, seventeenth most desired place, we saw that on Facebook, so that's got to be true. Right? So we have all these things here, we get more people in here, and that just continues then to roll over, we get this fire going, and, and the, the big fire here is across the street, and we're trying to do as much as we can to get that going. So, all good. Well said.
Before I motion to adopt, I want to say great job, guys over there. I mean, it was wonderful. I really appreciate all your hard work and effort and keeping us in the loop and including us in the whole process, and it was a good deal.
I'd like, I'd like to add for the record, Patrick and team did a really nice job buttoning this up.
Yeah.
This was more than a handshake. There were serious documents and exchanges that were negotiated and are reflected. This just didn't fall from the stars. It's the hard work of our team.
I agree, Pat and Administration, thank you for what you did. Pays for us being creative and proactive for what our future is in the city, you guys did a great job with that, so hopefully the chamber and Stark Development Board and this council was supporting it. You did keep us in the loop, and we appreciate that, this is a team effort, and we do things in North Canton. Any comments?
One, one final point is that, I know it hasn't been discussed, but it's my understanding that this project also will bear, hopefully, the imprint of jobs Ohio as well. So we've got the city, we've got the Stark Development Board, we've got the state's economic development agency supporting this project. I move to adopt the first reading of ordinance fifty dash two thousand nineteen.
There's a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Is there a motion and second to suspend the rules of council for three readings for ordinance number fifty dash two thousand nineteen?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. And is there a motion and second to adopt under suspension of the rules for ordinance number fifty dash two thousand nineteen?
So moved.
Second.
Motion carries?
All in favor?
All in favor, I'm sorry.
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you. All right, that concludes the court's resolutions. We'll go to reports.
Rob, where did you hear? Yeah. Thank you, Mr. Vice President. Just a couple of quick project notes. Tomorrow, our Eastbury Waterline project comes to a close, we're putting a final asphalt on it. That's gone on for a number of months, I'm glad to see that one behind us. It's a successful design. And we've got a couple more projects slated to start right after the Fourth of July, two of the week of July eighth, Weber reconstruction, we've actually got some equipment out there, contractor just waiting hopefully to be a little drier period, but he's ready to go on it. And then also the Watkins Lurale Waterline, we've talked a lot about on here or so, that's slated to start at the week of the eighth as well.
Yeah, again, I have a question. I know Main Street Festival's in August, and I heard from somebody, you might, you gotta watch the traffic fenders because if it ever explodes down for extended period of time, just to make sure the public's notified how to, you know, get to the main thoroughfare in North Canton.
Yeah, yeah, Everheart, we had a little closure this last week. It seemed to go real well, and then yes, the big closure is coming Monday, August fifth, after the Hall of Fame festival.
That's like three months.
That will be sixty days of August as well, that's the plan, sixty days, and we'll use the same detour, the county's routing half the traffic to the south on, on Main, South Main Street, Cleveland Avenue to Thirty-Eight Street, and then the detour north is north on, on South Main, so North Main to Sharp, where we have a light, and then back to Whipple. And that's, a lot of folks, we found with this little mini detour over the weekend, we're using Glenwood, and that caused, we anticipated, and a lot of traffic down there. But it's not the posted detour, so hopefully when folks see the, the four-way stop there, Glenwood really backs things up, they'll call it posted detour. Yeah, we'll, we'll have to watch out for the Main Street Festival.
Rob, questions? Because I was, you know, I go Glenwood all the time, so, so I saw how it was, it was pretty, pretty bad. And then when the gas lines there, is there a way, like during the rush time, if it gets bad, let's just say, if it's not, that we get a traffic guy out there and, and you know, it's that stop sign that does, and it backs things up, I mean, but if you had a guy, you know, starts waving through, I saw that as the gas line people were there, they had a lot of people waving through, that thing went pretty good as they were waving through kind of thing. So if it does get bad, is that something that we can look into during, from three-thirty that by?
We could certainly look at that.
Yeah, it was pretty bad at one point, it was backed up, and when it gets backed up to Whipple, that's the worst thing, because then people can't turn into it, so it did get backed up.
Right, and one of the things, and we did it with a little mini closure last week, to our Glenwood Waterline project, we were not working Thursday and Friday towards the Dominion, and Dominion wanted to, they were happy, but we weren't able to, but it really didn't last very long.
Yeah, that would have been nice.
But both those projects should be done, by all of us, that's the plan, that's why we're working kind of currently with them. But yeah, we'll, we'll take a look, and, and again, I urge people to follow the signed detour. A lot of thought went into that, eliminating streets with four-way stops, to use signal at intersections with left turn arrows, and I think if, if folks, you know, kind of use that rather than sort of making their own detour, they're going to go on signal, but we, we'll have to look at that.
Right, for Doug's point, though, the Grand Main Street Festival really got it, you know, that might be where we do need a police officer down there. That might be the issue. Thanks, Rob, for all your work on that.
Yeah, appreciate it, man.
Thank you.
Mayor?
Yes. The Civil Service Commission had a meeting, and, and whenever we prepare our, like upcoming tests, like to replace the chief position or the lieutenant's position, we've had a change in the structure over the past few years, where we have a chief, then we have a lieutenant, and then we have five sergeants underneath. In the event that you have the chief retire at some point in the future, then what we would do is we would have to conduct a test for the chief's position. You have to have at least more than one person take the test, but then you have to backfill that position, have to appoint a new chief. So then you're shortly after that having a lieutenant's position, or a sergeant's position, depending on who would take the new position as chief. So what we had proposed was to combine the chief test with the lieutenant's test, so that as people are testing for the chief's position or for the lieutenant's position, we can pull from the same pool, because they're both positions of leadership, very similar in the skill sets. And then what it does is, you know, for example, let's say that you have somebody to test for the chief position, there's going to be more than one, and in the event that one person is selected, then that person would have to go back again and then take another test for the lieutenant's position. So the good thing is, is it's just, it allows us to streamline the testing process, and it's going to be better for the candidates, whether they're seeking lieutenant opening or a chief opening, where they just have to take one test which will satisfy an opportunity to serve or be selected in both of those. There's no, there's no announcements or no retirements, but we just like to have an active list in the event that that takes place. So a little bit of a change. And then we were also thinking at some point down the road of changing for the civil service test for fire and police, where we combine those two tests because it's, it's a civil service test, not having two supplements. But that wouldn't take place until both tests expire, so we're looking at probably two years' time. And the next item is the Akron Children's. We had their ribbon cutting, and they had an open house, and the place is just beautiful. I mean, it's state-of-the-art. It's three stories, and they've got just state-of-the-art equipment, and they, they also decorated in such a way to relieve tension for young children and the families that are going in there. So they have, you know, these ping pong balls that are bouncing around in these, in these different tracks, and, you know, just, it's very colorful, and it's not, it's just a very warm and welcoming environment. So it went really well, a lot of people that are in this room here attended, and anybody that, that was present, if you have not taken a tour of the facility, I would encourage you to go and take a look at it. It's, it's really a beautiful place. And more importantly, is that we have a great service for families, so they don't have to travel up to Akron, they can come right here, Akron Children's right here in this area, and it's, it's also more jobs, brings new revenue to the city, which is the engine that keeps our police, fire, EMS, the city service going. So a really nice setup. And then lastly, yes, the, it wasn't just a Facebook tale, we had the Ohio Chamber of Commerce. What they did is they took all the cities that had enough data to be analyzed, so it was usually cities that were approximately twenty-five thousand in population or larger, which would include the city of North Canton, because we had sufficient data to consider. So they had two thousand five hundred and nine communities that were ranked, and they were ranked on five factors. It was employment, housing, quality of life, education, and the overall health of the, the residents. And so we were ranked number seventeen out of two thousand five hundred and nine communities. So that just tells you, it was, it was really a nice finish to a great couple weeks, brought in two hundred and fifteen new jobs to Debold, we also opened up the new center for Akron Children's, and then to be ranked for the highest, certainly the highest, you know, one of the highest ranked in the state of Ohio, number seventeen, certainly the highest at Stark County, and, and we're very proud of it. And not to mention, the state of Ohio is ranked number seven for GDP, gross domestic product.
Question?
Domestic product. Gross domestic product. So, so, you know, we're, we're moving along in the right manner, and, and economically, and I, and I would, and I don't have the specific numbers, but I would guess that we are one of the few cities that did not raise the income tax back in the two thousand seven, two thousand eight economic downturn. So, so we've learned to work with what we have, and we're, and we're succeeding. So my praise to the council and, and the administration, and more importantly, to the people living here.[1780.12] That's all.
Thanks, Mayor. Good to be here.
Yes, I would just like to thank all the members of council for the opportunity to address a number of your concerns. I do appreciate the emails and phone calls that I get with your particular, specific constituent issues, and we're able to solve them. I think one, just to share with everybody, that down in the area where we took out all the homes for the flooding, down along the Zimber and all that, and I know the mayor, you were going to report that we haven't had any complaints regarding any flooding.
Zero.
In the city. Down there, as a result of that, of course, the utility poles were left in place. And I had a report from constituent, through council, that some of the wiring that ran to those poles was left hanging. So the concern had our appropriate personnel out there inspected, determined first that they were not live wires. So this mainly had to do with cable wires that were cut and left hanging. So our city crews went through and removed all those wires, to take that out of play. And we've talked with ADP, intercoordinating their removal efforts to get those poles all removed and eyesore removed. So appreciate that. Had a couple of nuisance complaints with some dead trees. We do have ordinance on the books that if there are dead trees in your property, you have an obligation to remove them under the code. Spoke with homeowners on that, and we've had those dealt with. So don't be shy. Make sure you send me your request, and I'll get to it. Tim helped out on one, which would be that I could give you, so between somebody that we're giving to. Thank you.
Thank you.
Your report.
Hello, Mayor.
Yes, just to follow up and thank the good folks at Devoe next door. And the allegation that there was extortion involved with this actually is, it's quite the opposite of what occurred, that once we were informed that there was an interest of moving some positions to the city of North Canton from that well-known, well-respected corporation, that those involved pulled out all of their stocks. I think it's fair to say that in a polite and kind but relentless way, we pursued this opportunity. So for all of those that were involved, this began with a relationship with parties that knew how the city did business, and its history, and its ability to continue to grow despite having one of the lowest tax rates for income tax in the state. And so it's terrific to see this come to a culmination with this vote, the addition of utilizing the community improvement corporation to help seal this deal. The allegation that they extorted us is, as I said, is just quite the opposite. We did everything we could to show that we were well-meaning, but still cognizant of we're not going to give everything away to get this proposal. It's a very diminutive type of grant. They absolutely could have asked other communities personally to give me more and taken it, but they wanted to be here in North Canton, so that speaks volumes for this council and administration. Thank you.
Mayor Scherden.
A couple of things. Over the last several months, we've talked a lot about permits and some dissatisfaction with contractors and so on. So I would say, about a month ago, we got together with a group of contractors that had been pretty active in our community. Dom, Darrell, myself, Pat met with them, one from a concrete side, one from a building side, one from a supplier side. And we listened to their issues that they may have and their concerns. It was very cordial and very productive. And Pat, of course, was late to do the late work, a lot of this. And today, we met with the concrete side, and we made some really good progress with getting our permits in line with everybody else. And I think the concrete people were very happy with it. We had Marty, our inspector, or the chief inspector, run a call from that. He was involved in it also, and made some good changes. I think we can all say it was very positive. It was the way it should be done, listening and then going back and seeing what we could do, and then getting back to them about their approval and buy-in and their moving forward. So we'll probably see some of that moving forward. And I can't say enough about how that was taking care of us, and thank you with all that. Secondly, along with that, and Pat will probably miss that, next week, we're going to talk about a sidewalk project. We've all been talking about sidewalks. And Ben, who is our intern here, was put to the test here, and really came out on top with putting together a program, looking at other people, then what to do with sidewalks, and how, you know, we can pay and have people pay half the week they have, type of thing. But it's a whole program of that. He will be introducing that next, Monday, I believe, it is July 1st. I reviewed it and everything, so I've been really vocal about the sidewalk, just like everyone else. And I think this is a great start to where we're headed with this. This is for sidewalks that need repair. Okay, the new sidewalk stuff's going to come back to us, and we're going to have to look at where we're going to move with that. But I think it's a good start, so we'll look forward to seeing that, and having Ben stand up and do his thing here, and he does it very well. And that's all I have.
Thanks.
Patrick and I have met with the realtors not once but twice on a rental renovation. We have some documents to review, we have some drafts that are being cleaned up. I expect that we should have some things soon after our fall break, if I correct that. We've got a little bit of work to do yet. But, so there's some behind-the-scenes activity, and I think we're going to have a reasonably decent product as a start of it.
Great.
Thank you. Good conversation.
Your report.
Your report.
I was going to thank Jessica for the article, it was fine. It's just nice, we can have those ways, community articles, where you see so many people that are participating, and just something new that we're doing, so thank you for that. Rob, thanks for all the communication with all the roads and Everhard, and the signs went up way beforehand, and it's going to get really busy after August, and that's just so important, because then they don't like it, but it just makes it a little bit easier knowing that they know how to plan. So thanks for all of that. That's great, working with the construction and the trades, because we've heard this again and again and again. So that's a great step mark, taking a leap in that. I know we've both have heard many complaints in the past year especially, and I think with Marty coming on, it's just, we have a really good opportunity to make things fair given, and make it so that people want to come into our community. In regards to the prayer, I appreciate longstanding traditions as well. However, honestly, I would rather have, I don't even know who's supposed to get the person that does the prayer, but if you look at Alliance, and I think they have seven council people, I'm not sure, it's a rotating whoever wants to do and says it, and they're able to say how it is being, and same with Kansas City. I don't know if I want to spend any more time looking at how the communities do it, but Mark had done a nice job. And honestly, I would rather have whoever's supposed to be doing it, maybe focusing on other things, and maybe it's time that we look at that differently and say, we are doing it okay the way it is. As far as vacation, you know, I guess maybe there isn't anything else to talk about, and so we wanted to say something about people's vacation. This is the second job. We've looked through the charter, it doesn't say how many times you have to be at meetings per month. Jeff does a great job, as I think all of us do. And Chuck, you have numerous times looked at how many times people have been absent and not. And council, compared to many other councils, does a really good job of that. And whether they're on vacation or at a meeting for work, we all do that on a regular basis with all of our jobs. So I don't want Jeff to throw him under the bus, or anyone that's not here. Same with Laura and the other assistant, as far as looking up who's supposed to call. We don't need to throw anybody under the bus when you come up here. Thanks, Pat, for also looking at the trees. I have really nice notes from a woman who wanted a dead tree down, and the response was just wonderful, so thank you. You're really good about calling us back and communicating that with each of us individually, and then working with the constituents and letting us follow up with them in different ways. So thank you for doing that. And I think that's it. Thank you.
I'm going to do a quick comment.
I'd rather someone do it too, but really, does it matter who says it? It's all about saying it.
Right.
And putting it out, so.
Well, and it's hard to get people, I mean, it's hard for them to come. It takes time, maybe from them actually going out of the community service.
Some of them really like coming to.
But they do try.
Yeah, they just need to be asked.
But in majority, it's not happening by the place. So I don't think it's something we need to criticize. We're getting it done, and that's something good to us.
Well said. Thank you.
Prayer.
Prayer.
Doug, you and I know this body's been prayed over for a long, long, long time. And I would just simply say, I would agree, I think it's more important that we have a prayer delivered than, like, who delivers it. And I say, you know, I would just also note too, that, you know, if we make a big, big deal out of this, it will attract the kind of attention you really don't want. And then someone will materialize and demand that we stop them.
Right.
It's a real risk. I mean, we have seen already our Christmas tree lighting remade. And I think we want to be open to all face, obviously, but it's a practice, I think, that has served us well over the years.
But I think there's also a time where when it went from Christmas to holiday, actually, before it is today, so I'm okay with that, but.
My point is, my point is that we see a fair amount of communication from external bodies regarding religious activities with the legislative entities. I don't think we really want to have trouble. So it's just kind of, we're heads down, pray. Literally figure.
As we say daily.
Just do it.
Thank you. That was my fun day.
So I was at the open house Saturday with the mayor, and it was first class. I mean, it was well done. It was packed. They said that there's people actually knocking on the doors before they even open to try to come in as patients. And they have a huge amount of following. I guess there's a huge amount in this area, you know, to be able to walk to Akron Children's. So it's really a neat facility, of course, a good to the job plus column, and of course, the new jobs with last week's announcement, the 215 jobs, it's great. I want to also say, thanks, Patrick, for getting the flags up. It looks great. I had many people comment to me about it. They just asked me to get a little bit more money so I could finish it all the way down to Everhard. So I have one more donation coming. Paps, you know.
Looks so nice.
Did you guys see that?
Looks so nice.
I mean, is that what you want to see out in town?
Yes, so nice.
So Paps, so we've only just begun, really, when you think about what's going to happen in the main corridor. This is what we've been missing for years upon years upon years. And the reality is now, when you drive down the road and you see the people interacting, the families, the, you know, the kids after ball practice, whatever it may be, you know, I want to see a lot more of that happening in our corridor. And I'm really excited about Tim, or I mean Hoover's, because those 140 apartments, there's a lot of people that want to move into that place. They just gave it up because they don't believe it will ever happen. I feel confident it's going to happen, and I feel confident that this corridor is coming back. So as we continue working on the DRD, and hopefully the entertainment and other things, I think I'll be pretty excited about what happens to our community. So I'm really thrilled to be part of it. So I say, thank you.
Yeah, one other thing, I wanted to say thanks, thank you to Akron Children's. They've been great about communicating and inviting us and things. I was just at, did a conference last year for, last week. Maybe anyone else got? Maybe we were all invited, but it was very good to see, and they had Sandra Elte, who's the national CNN correspondent there, and then in the after, actually, the governor came up, and then they had a panel, and then they had Jake Bens, who wrote Hill in the E.L.G., if anybody read that. And so to have two national speakers was a pretty, a pretty big deal. And they invited all of us to come, and it was just an opportunity to go up there. And we had another thing up here for Don't Have The Team. It's just as nice to be included in, but they weren't part of it either. So, thank you.
All right, final call for the committee. Seeing none, we do have a committee meeting next week, a special council meeting, and we should come Monday, July 1st. Remember that. See everybody here next Monday. With that, I'll have a motion to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
opposed? Me? Yes.
Laura?
Go ahead.
Got a minute?
Thanks.